You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to meet. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one, heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Well, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Monday, June 24th Fayetteville City Council meeting. Have a lot of special guests in the audience today. But at this time, we'll begin with prayer. We'll ask that Pastor Wilbert Blandon Jr. from Antioch Bible Fellowship Ministries, if he would join us at the podium. Ask that all would rise for the invocation. If you could please remain standing before the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we appreciate this city council meeting tonight. We invite your presence, your wisdom, and your guidance. We know that we can do nothing without you. We ask that you would guide us all as we make our difference here in this city. And Lord, as we begin this meeting, let your wisdom abound and may the grace of God rest on each one of us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. (inaudible) United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Blandon, if you would, I know you very well, but if you could tell council and other members and those joining us by television, a little about yourself and your ministry.
As you mentioned, Mayor, I am Pastor Wilbert Blandon Jr. of Antioch Bible Fellowship Ministries. We have been here over 25 years with our ministry. We are also the Director of Life Focus Empowerment Network Incorporated, which is a life skills education program which we have served the community with since 2006. We're very involved in the community. We have ministry on Fayetteville State. We have ministry with the youth and the community, and we are privileged to be here in the great city of Fayetteville.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for joining us this evening.
God bless you.
At this time, do not see our other special guest that normally joins us in the dais, so I guess they've started their summer vacation early. So we'll move down to recognitions. This time, I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim and ask that maybe Councilmember Waddell, she would join me at the podium?
So what we have, we have some very special guests here. Our very own Carolina Chaos, the AAU basketball team. They brought home some gold to the great city of Fayetteville. Mayor Colvin. Mayor Colvin and Councilmember Waddell would like to have them come on up. How do you want to do it? The coaches, the team, the whole group, we could have them all come on up.
Come on, let's go around here.
And the trophies up front. Yep. Trophies up front.
Yeah, you got the trophy. You got the trophy. But it's up front. Give it to one of the short guys.
So we have a certificate of excellence presented to Carolina Chaos in recognition for winning the AAU Basketball Championship at Atlanta, Georgia. And we'd love to have the coach. Yeah? Yeah? And then, we'd love to have the coach, you know, get up to the podium and speak after the young professionals come around. All right, Coach.
Yes, I am Coach Emmett Pettiford. Right here is my assistant coach, Carlos Craig, Senior. We are the coaches of the young men here. We've been here, we done started this organization, me and my wife here. We had started the organization, this is our second year running. So with our second year running, like you said, we came from recreational ball, from recreational ball, reaching out to the community in recreational ball, to starting our own organization here. We are partnering with the Pride of Fathers here, he has an organization as well, with reaching out to the youth. Like you said, mentoring to the youth, to the kids with absent parents and that aspect there. Like you said, it's one of the biggest things. We try to make it as a family there, a family-oriented thing there. And one of the biggest things there too, from being involved with the youth, we also like to get involved in the community as well. So from the community to bringing it into family, making everything whole there itself. So, like I said, I'm gonna let my assistant coach have some words as well there. There we go. What you got, Carlos?
I just want to say that it's truly been a blessing to be a part of this organization and just having the opportunity to work with the youth and to try to bring back something back to Fayetteville. You know, me and my wife, we talked about moving, but I'm like, nah, I see something else here that I feel like we can bring to this community. You know, even them, they was, you know, considering moving. I was like, nah, man, let's not, it's something here. You know, so we want to try to make sure we can have the opportunity to grow this community and make something happen here in Fayetteville, you know, for our families, for our youth, and for this community. And we thank y'all for the recognition.
Like I said, one more thing. Any, like you said, with this being said, like you said, we do a lot for the youth there. So far as it's a lot of attention going towards the youth, like you said, anytime we have, trying to find sponsors there, we actually try to help build these kids. A lot of the kids are unable to afford to actually participate in these type of things there. Like you said, whenever we get a sponsor, it helps out a lot. It helps us a lot, a whole lot. Because they're, like you said, we can reach different kids, we can bring different kids in, and kids that are unable to pay, like you said, so it's a big thing there for us.
Thank you.
And we thank y'all so much for having us.
They gotta get back to practice. No, we really appreciate everything you do for our community, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the parents. So our next recognition, could we have Ms. Marsha Bryant, please come on up to the It's sad news, but, you know, she's retiring, she's leaving with, leaving us. A little bit about Marsha, Marsha began her career with the city of Fayetteville in 1996 as a planning technician. She was eventually promoted to Planner II and then promoted to, in 2014, to Senior Planner/ Development Associate/Advocate. A few of her responsibilities over the years: subdivision, site review, review and signing off on plaques, working extensively with the development community, assisting with annexations, Board of Adjustments, assisted with rezoning cases, the Planning Commission, the Public Arts Commission, writing text amendments, and there's various other day-to-day operations that the list could go on and on. So the Mayor Colvin has something for her. Mayor Colvin. And then, we also gonna have, no, that's it for now.
So, Ms. Bryant, on behalf of the members of Fayetteville City Council and the more than 208,000 citizens we hereby represent, we certainly want to just present a small token of our appreciation for the service you've rendered to the city and its citizens over the last several years. (inaudible).
Yep. And our next recognition, could we have Mr. Jay Reinstain and his family come on up to the podium if they would wish? And also Councilmember Jensen will be joining Mayor Colvin. So Jay is also officially retiring, and so... We're gonna have a short video? So you might...
I want to tell you a story about a guy who on the surface appears to be your average Joe, but in reality, he is one of the most memorable people you might ever meet. His name is Jay Reinstain. So let's start at the beginning and get the scoop from someone who knows him pretty well.
My name is Elizabeth Reinstain and I'm Jay's daughter. My dad grew up in the DC area with a brother and a sister. He was the oldest. Even when he was younger, he always had a bunch of friends. He was always trying to just, he was just a very sociable person, always hanging out with someone. He always had something to do. He met my mom in Atlantic City. Later, they started talking and they decided to move to North Carolina. They picked either North Carolina, Florida, or I think it was either Maryland they were either gonna move to, and they decided North Carolina. Sounds pretty cool.
And we are glad they chose to settle here. Jay would work in Durham for several years before coming to the great city of Fayetteville. He would immediately make an impression with his peers.
I first met Jay about seven years ago when he came to interview for the position of Assistant City Manager here at the city. And I was serving as a panelist on one of the assessment centers. Jay did an excellent presentation, and at the end of the presentation, all the candidates were asked a series of questions. And so I asked Jay a question and he responded with a fake British accent. I just thought that was kind of strange that a candidate would mimic the accent of one of the panelists. But it was all in good humor, so, and he ended up getting the job, so.
And a great job he did. An impactful team leader and a personable peer, Jay gave the city his all, making everyone he met and worked with feel like they were the only person in the world that mattered. Regardless who you talk to, most will agree that he just made the job more fun.
Crazy socks.
Silly socks.
Jay likes to wear different kinds of socks. So it got turned on to this whole crazy sock idea, which really started a trend here several years ago in the city and has permeated throughout. And so every day, as I'm picking out my socks, it's rarely a solid color sock. It's something different. And really, I remember that back to Jay first starting that, and it was an okay thing to do.
Be it crazy socks, his involvement with Core Value Employee Awards, his portfolio picnics, the Jaywalkers, health and wellness initiatives, the list goes on and on. It was all done to improve the quality of life for everyone around him. And it worked. Anytime you ask someone about Jay, the response usually comes with a big smile and everyone, I mean, everyone has a Jay story.
I have a Jay story.
I've got a really good Jay story.
So Jay may not look like it, but he is a veteran half marathon racer. So Jay is not out to set any land speed records, he's out there to have a good time. So we had a team and we were all wearing our Jaywalker t-shirts, so we were all in one group. By the time we got to the top of Morganton Road, Kathy Jensen and Jay were far behind because they were doing more talking than they were doing walking.
What we decided to do is we were going to tell everyone along the route, when you see the two other people coming along that have this t-shirt on, the Jaywalker shirt, please tell them, less talk, more walk. They need to speed it up. Can you please root them on and get them here?
We decided to wait for them on the bridge because we could stand up there and see them coming down the All-American. They finally come, so Jay got up to us, he said, everybody, I don't know why everybody knows me, I don't know how everybody knows why I am.
I'm so popular. Everybody, I feel so special. And we were like, eh, not really, Jay.
He has been awarded accolades, but he may be remembered most for the strong relationships created and influence bestowed along the way.
Jay is supportive. There is not a time that he wouldn't come to you and say, what can I do for you? I know you guys are stressed for budget, what can I do to make your life easy? What can I do to help you get over this hump?
He was that guy I could go to as a sounding board, as a leader, as an Assistant City Manager here in the city that just had his ear on everything, the pulse of everything that was going on here to bounce ideas off of, to talk about things, whether it was open door or closed door. Jay was just one of those trusted agents you could go to and share just about anything.
It was his mission in life to serve the public. He enjoyed doing that. And he worked very hard to collaborate well with his coworkers, with his staff, with other departments, and with other organizations in the community to reach whatever goal he had on a particular project.
He is now in a new journey in life, helping with Alzheimer's, so I feel like that's what he's meant to do right now, and he's gonna help find a cure because he's that person who's always just worked hard until he's found a solution. I love my dad and I'm always gonna be there for him, and I'm excited that I get to spend more time with him now.
Jay, we hate to see you leave, really, but please know, we sincerely appreciate our time with you. And we also know, you are not done improving the lives of everyone you meet.
So I had asked the mayor before we came downstairs today if I could say, and we a little emotional, something about my friend Jay Reinstain. Six years ago, I started this job. Jay came in and didn't really know a lot what was going on, but you were right there with me. And we started on this committee called the CVAs. And Jay and I had difference of opinions on things because I believe everybody is a winner and nobody should get a no vote. And everybody should walk away with the prize. And the committee did not feel that way. And to see Jay try to figure out how to please me and then please a committee was taking a lot of, took a lot. But with that being said, we have CVA pins that it took me a year or two, like, have a tantrum. And when I came to the party today, I asked Jackie, I said, does Jay have a CVA pin? And she said, I don't think he does. So it is appropriate for me to put for Core Value Awards to Jay Reinstain, my marathon buddy. We haven't made it under three hours and 15 minutes yet.
Dead last.
And we were dead last this year, and we were fine with it because...
Proud of it.
And we were proud of it, and we talked our way through the whole thing, and we had a ball. And Jerry is looking forward to having the donuts ready for us next time around. I've done it, I've done the run, walk, five years, and I've done it four with you, and I pray to God that we're doing it again next year.
It's overwhelming.
Well, Jay, I mean, anyone who watched the video, you just got a snippet of his personality. And so tonight, I think it is only fitting it would give you the key because you've unlocked so many good times and you really know how to bring laughter and joy to the council and to the staff and employees, so we're certainly gonna miss you. So we would like tonight to present you the key of the city. Says, "On behalf of the city of Fayetteville, Mayor and Council, our city key and coin are proudly presented to Jay Reinstain, Assistant City Manager, in grateful appreciation of his devoted interest, dedication, and untiring commitment to the residents of Fayetteville during his years of service, from January 2014 to November 2018, presented the 24th day of June 2019."
Thank you so much.
I would just like to say a few words, if I may. Would you like to sit down? That would be fine. That was for you, Pamela.
Keep practicing, Jay.
Yeah. This day from, I began at 11 o'clock with an exit interview with Mr. Hewitt, and then to a luncheon, and then to a reception, and now this. And it's just overwhelming. I talked earlier and I've shared a few things with folks, but, you know, we talk about legacies. And, you know, a legacy could be the new baseball stadium for some folks, or it could be one of the skate park, or one of our splash pads for others. But for me, it was really about building relationships in the organization and trying the best that I could to improve and change the culture with the great support of Doug, and I really mean it. I have just thoroughly enjoyed this five years of my career, and it's difficult, you know, you say you have a purpose in life, and initially, my purpose was being a civil servant and really a public servant and serving the people. And now, the next chapter in my life, it's going to be trying to find a cure for Alzheimer's, working with our legislators at the state and the federal level. I'll have a great opportunity. I've been selected to serve on the National Alzheimer's Board in Chicago, taking my daughter with me as my companion. They tell me I need to have a companion. So she will be joining me at my first board meeting in July, and then be going to Louisville after that, speaking at a conference. But more importantly, to have the support and the kindness from people in this organization, I mean, it really touches me. I just can't tell you how much. And I just, thank you. And I just wanted to share one last story that in my travels and talking to other people with younger onset Alzheimer's like myself, in their 40s and 50s, one of the biggest struggles folks have are in the workplace. And before it's officially identified, they can tell that they're having difficulties with memory, retrieving information, things that most of us take for granted. And I know the day that I was starting to really notice some changes, I had to make a big decision. And the decision was, if I went public, I had the opportunity to raise awareness, but I could only do that because of the great support at the top. And Doug Hewitt, I remember talking to Doug Hewitt and Barbara Hill, our HRD Director, and I said, what do I do? You know, I'm 57. And Doug said, how do you want to do things? Just, we'll work with you. And to get that support, that story is rare. That story is rare. And when I hear it from so many other people, people have lost jobs, that people have been, there's been punitive action taken against folks and evaluations, but to have an organization that values their employees, like I believe this organization does, means everything to me. So thank you so much for everything. I've enjoyed the ride. God bless everyone.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something to him?
Yes, sir. Mr. Reinstain, Councilman Chris has a few words for you.
Mr. Reinstain, you know, God puts people in our paths for reasons. You have, and I'm the old guy up here, and I've been around for more than three score and 10. You're the most positive individual that I've ever had to work with. You are one beautiful man. You really are. Your character...
Inside beautiful.
Yes. But I just want to say this to you as you walk out of these chambers, there's an awful lot of love up here for you, brother, and don't you ever forget it. You call us if you need us. This chamber is full of love for Jay Reinstain. Let's give it to him.
Thank you.
(applause).[1767.83]
Right. Thank you, thank you again, Mr. Reinstain. All right, Council, we, item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda, I'll look to you for action.
Motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Arp, there's a second by Councilmember Waddell. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those present. Motion carries. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
There's a motion by Councilmember Arp, there's a second by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Consent motion carries. Item 7.01, Stormwater Ordinance Revision. Ms. Sheila.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is an update of the Stormwater Ordinance pursuant to the consensus of Council from our June 3 work session. And I have here a short presentation for you. So, from our June 3 work session, the city council had consensus to accept responsibility for stormwater problems and the public right of way, and this ordinance reflects that. To accept stormwater projects off the public right of way with a shared responsibility, cost sharing to be determined. So, the point one here are the projects, or the projects that we considered, that we consider a must, a must responsibility for the city. Option two, what we may do. And then option three is accept options A, B, and C for added city crews, project design, additional engineering staff, and a consultant. So from the work session, we, the city council, accepted responsibility for stormwater problems in the public right of way, must projects. And then the part two and part three, accept stormwater projects off the public right of way with a shared responsibility, and then accept options A, B, and C for added city crews, project design, additional engineering staff, and a consultant. So, the ordinance reflects what you discussed in that work session, and what you see here in black is existing ordinance, what we have currently in our ordinance, and what you have here in red is what we've added to reflect the consensus from that work session. I don't want to go into the details of the ordinance, you have it before you, but certainly can answer any questions. We have three parts to this, section B that we added, as well as C, as well as D. So the options in front of you today are, the city council adopts the ordinance revision and directs staff to develop a plan for the Drainage Assistance Program. The other option is the city council does not adopt the ordinance revision and provides further direction to staff. Our recommendation is that staff recommends that the city council adopt the ordinance revision and direct staff to develop a plan for the Drainage Assistance Program. So it's a very short presentation, I'll leave it open for any further discussion.
All right, I do have one slight question. So, you all, and this may be for the manager, you all are still crafting the criteria that would fit within this change, is that correct?
Absolutely.
When do you anticipate having something back for discussion on that part of it?
Absolutely. We have set apart two work sessions. The first will be in the August, your first session, when you come back into session in August. And then the second, if there are any follow-up questions, will be in September.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cullerton?
Mayor, I was gonna make a motion if there's any further discussion.
Well, let me entertain any other questions, I have a light for the motion already. But you can be a second, that certainly would be appreciated. Any other questions for Ms. Sheila? All right, so I have a motion, Councilman Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little happy for this ordinance, as it is just the beginning of trying to help some of our off-right-of-way concerns. So, I'm very supportive of this item, and I would like to make a motion that the city council adopts the ordinance revision and directs staff to develop a plan for the Drainage Assistance Program.
There's a motion by Councilmember Hare, there's a second by Councilmember Cullerton.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those present, motion carries. All right, Council, I'll look to you for...
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
No, sir, we not leaving this early.